If you want to.
Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of Commissioners' work session, February 15, 2024. Commissioner Baxter has an award ceremony to attend for her daughter. She won't be here. Is there an approval of the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. The first is Police Requests Budget 2025. Is that the first one?
Thank you, Mayor. Give a brief overview for the board. So this is the board's second installment of seeing the requested budgets. The requested budgets are everything that the departments have identified as their needs for the upcoming fiscal year. This will not result in a budget, a balanced budget. That's why these are requested budgets. When I present the board with their FY '25 budget, that will be a balanced budget, but this is the time for you to take a look and ask questions. So when the recommended budget comes before you, you have a good sense of what's been left in and what's been left off. So these presentations are really important to not only give you a heads up about what the details of the request, but also so you can start formulating in your mind what is going to be priorities for you, because some of these requests will not be in the recommended budget. So this is your opportunity. We're available to answer questions that pop up as they, as we present. So with that, the first requested budget presented for tonight is by Chief Jackie Boykin.
Good evening, all. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight to give you a glimpse into some of the things that have been happening in the Police Department in the last quarter, and then some insight into our budget requests that you'll see in the coming weeks. As a refresher, our overarching goals are what guide our daily activities. To help us reach our goals, we set annual objectives and priorities that are in support of our strategic plan. This year, we have four budget priorities that will be at the core focus for our department moving forward with our strategic plan. Improving the applicant pool means that we're looking to increase the number and quality of applicants. We want to grow our organizational structure to ensure that we have constant supervision over line personnel. As a department, we're constantly assessing the way that we serve the community and we make adjustments as necessary. As we grow, we know that we're going to have to add more frontline workers to meet the service demands of our community. We maintain a constant and ever-changing six-year staffing forecast that projects our needs in the coming years. We know that we can be doing more as it relates to the investigation of juvenile gang and drug activity, but it will require more resources. In the following slides, I'll discuss some of how we intend to accomplish these goals through two major budget requests: raising starting salary and adding personnel. I'll get started this evening by discussing our applicant pool. In 2023, we posted two job announcements: one that ran three and a half months during the summer and another that ran for three and a half months during the fall. When I say "ran," that means from the time it was posted until we stopped accepting applications. So during the seven months that we accepted applications, we had over 7,000 people look at our job posting, but only 45 filled out applications. And of those 45, only 14 met minimum qualifications for being a police officer or for having some tie to the Zebulon community. On this chart, viable applications are represented by a bright green box, but you can't even see it because there were so few. Why are we receiving so few applications? I selected the agencies here for a couple of reasons. Some are our immediate neighbors. We work with them. We support them daily. Some of these folks will be coming into Zebulon in the coming month to help manage calls for service while we're hosting our annual award ceremony. And we go to these municipalities on a weekly basis to back them up for calls or to provide canine assistance. These are the men and women that our officers are connecting with most frequently and having conversations about work conditions, salaries, and benefits. Oh, Lord. What happened to the...
I didn't touch it.
Okay, I did. All right. Next group I chose because this is the group that we are losing candidates and employees to. They're taking applicants and staff because of better pay. In the last six months, we've lost people to Raleigh, Wake Forest, Wake County, Holly Springs, and Fuquay. Now, I don't want to imply that all of our officers leave for better salary. Some, one of our most recent, left because he was looking for a better work-home-life balance, and he was able to shorten his commute and spend more time at home. But many do leave for pay. It's this. It's me hitting the wrong button. All right. The last group of agencies are departments that we desire to be like. When you consider things like diversity, equity, and inclusion, these agencies have made significant progress in mirroring their communities. When we set up a recruiting booth at Meredith College, we're parked next to Cary and Apex and Morrisville. Highly qualified minority and female applicants have their pick of these agencies, and when the salary is so much better and the benefits are more attractive in other agencies, they go there. So the applicants we do get have been coming to us most frequently from down east. Our last several hires coming from Clinton, Warsaw, and Rocky Mount. We are competitive with some of those down east agencies, but they've yet to see the massive growth and complex issues that are associated with living in the capital county. This chart illustrates average salaries. In the first column, this is where we're recruiting from, down east. The second column shows average salaries for those agencies that are taking our employees and our candidates, like Holly Springs, Wake Forest, and Fuquay. And this last group, calling it the initiative group, are agencies that we strive to be like, that are doing well with having a diverse workforce that mirrors their community. If we want to increase the applicant pool and remain competitive with the agencies down east where we've been getting our candidates from, we still need to think about raising base salary by 6%. I want you to think about the front door of the Police Department for a second. Just to be able to keep that front door open and keep this consistent group of candidates coming, 6% is a minimum that we could raise salary. I don't want a revolving door at the Police Department. Right now, we're spending time hiring candidates, training them up, giving them great work experience, and then they're leaving us for other agencies, and that process starts right back over again. If we want to keep from being a revolving door agency, we need to raise salaries by 18% just to keep them from leaving and going to our competitors. The last group is the initiative group. These are the folks that I'm set up next to at the job fairs, and if we want to really be aggressive and at the front of the pack as it relates to having a diverse workforce, we've got to raise salaries by 26%. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention here that the salaries captured were a moment in time in January. Realistically, every agency in Wake County is assessing salary and benefits for law enforcement on a regular basis, and conversations I've had with other chiefs are that these numbers are only going to go up. So our neighbors are looking at salary increases for July 1st, and it'll be even more expensive for us recruiting in the future. I also want to point out that raising base salary will require a domino effect for existing employees. If we raise base and don't raise existing salaries, then we undo every bit of work that we did in addressing compression through the career development program, and we risk having new employees making more money than the officers that are training them. I'd like to take a moment longer on this slide to talk about minority recruitment. I'd like to take a moment longer on this slide to talk about minority recruiting and diversifying our workforce. As a best practice, we seek to mirror our community as it relates to demographics. Zebulon is a very diverse community. There are families who have been here for generations and others who have recently moved here. And they're not moving here just from across North Carolina. We have folks coming in from other states and other countries. We've got military veterans, corporate vice presidents, and single moms. We have citizens with graduate degrees and doctorate degrees and some who never finished high school. There's a great mix of Hispanic, Asian, Black, and White. This community really is a melting pot, and our police department does not reflect it. But we are making some strides. 20% of our staff is female; that's nearly twice the national average. We continue to be committed to the 30-by-30 initiative, which encourages 30% of recruits to be female by the year 2030. Six of our officers are veterans. We represent different religions and cultures, but minorities are still underrepresented, and there are a couple of reasons why. Some is a reflection of social and cultural opinions about law enforcement, but some is a reflection of how attractive the town of Zebulon is as an employer. I want you to think about a career fair at Wake Tech, a general career fair, not field-specific. We're set up with medical profession, the medical profession, banking, other corporate jobs, and the entry-level positions are making $52,000 a year or $58 an hour, and our less-than-22-dollar-an-hour salary just is not at all competitive. And this is the reality that we're dealing with. Beyond our desire to improve compensation, we have a need for additional personnel in our department. I'd like to share some information that illustrates our workload. I'm sure this graph looks familiar because I stole it from Chief Perry, but added a little bit of police-specific information. The green line represents our calls for service. You can see how call volume is increasing exponentially. Some of the increase is related to the way that we do business, being more proactive and intentional in our activities like traffic stops and security checks. Some of it's related to the increases... Increases in population and having a larger footprint for us to patrol, along with increased traffic volume. What's important to note on this slide is that call volume has more than doubled in the last three years. The yellow line shows population growth, something that y'all are intimately familiar with, and the gray line illustrates more traffic, which Chief Perry talked about a couple weeks ago. While this can mean more crashes, it definitely means more traffic enforcement. Mike and Joe have talked about how the impacts of development hit town departments at different times. Planning sees their workload increase on the front end as new developments come. Public work experiences the next wave of workload increases as new infrastructure has to be maintained. Fire, Parks and Rec, and police see that wave a little bit later as residents move into the new neighborhoods and become users of our services. Our officers really started seeing the impacts of growth and increased workload around 2020. Since that time, our staff has grown by 25%, but our workload has doubled. One of those new positions that was given to us at the beginning of this year has yet to be filled because of our difficulties with a shallow applicant pool. Knowing what development has already been approved and speculating on what comes next, we know that we need more officers to be added to the department annually. This budget cycle, we're planning for a community of over 13,000, and we're asking for five additional people. Though our officers are being asked to do more, we feel that our strategies have had a significant positive impact. In the last six years, we've decreased violent crime, cutting it in half. I'm absolutely proud of the work that's been done at the police department, and I feel like we can have more positive impacts with additional resources. This is our current organizational chart with the five additional positions added. We're requesting two patrol officers to help manage calls for service, two lieutenants to ensure appropriate supervision and staffing, an additional detective to broaden our capacity at working with gangs, drugs, and juvenile. Breaking this down a little bit further, this is our patrol division. I'm going to talk about minimum staffing for a moment. For years, minimum staffing has been just two. Last year, almost half of our shifts were worked with just two officers. In a town of 5,000 people with 8,000 calls for service, that may have been reasonable, but in a town with nearly 12,000 people and 25,000 calls for service, it is not. We need to increase minimum staffing to three, and we can only do that by having additional personnel in the patrol division. Having four officers on each shift will bring us to a point where we can raise minimum staffing to three, but we do have to have those folks in place before we can change that policy. Now, I'm sure you recognize and see the vacancies here on this chart, and I'll give a quick update where we are with hiring. We do have one additional person on staff right now. His paperwork hasn't come back from the state, so he can't go out on patrol and carry out law enforcement duties. I do expect to have that paperwork literally any day now, so that'll be one of the vacancies. We have two conditional offers extended and hope to have two more positions filled by mid-March, leaving us with one vacancy. We've had a position posted on NeoGov since the first week in January. I looked at the count of views and applications today. There were over 1,600 views on the post and six applicants, only one of which is a viable In the meantime, we have pulled our special operations division over into patrol. So last year, you helped us create a special operations unit that would focus on problem areas and traffic. For most of the last three months, these officers have been pulled into patrol and are not able to focus on those problem areas and traffic. I'm going to use part of the patrol division org chart to help illustrate some of the situations that we find ourselves in pretty regularly. There are times that a patrol sergeant needs to take off. It might be vacation, court, training. Generally, supervisors are out of place about 20% of the time. So here we have a patrol team with no sergeant, and the five-year officer is the ranking officer in charge, working with a younger guy who, though he has three years' experience, just came off of field training. If they get a call to Walmart for a shoplifting and find that the suspect has a warrant, that three-year officer is headed into Raleigh, and he'll be gone for an hour or an hour and a half. If we were to have a domestic dispatched, we'd have to wait for backup from Wendell or the sheriff's office. It takes Wendell 10 or 15 minutes to get over here. Our officers respond to one of our neighborhoods for a domestic and find out it's an out-of-state custody issue. These are realistic events that our officers are dealing with, often with no supervision or direction. And they're more complex issues because of how our community is growing. Here's another one of our squads and another example of them managing a heavy workload with just a few. We see a vacancy here on this team, and one of the officers calls out six, so again, we've got two. And dispatch to a robbery at a gas station. So two officers have to set up a crime scene, identify witnesses, interview victims, call out crime scene processing, notify the on-call commander, get a detective en route. Those things take people, and two folks trying to manage that kind of complex scene is difficult. Realistically, we've got people coming, the on-call commanders come, and the on-call detective is coming, but they're going to manage that scene by themselves, probably for 30 minutes or an hour. These are real examples of things that we're dealing with, and we can't expect two officers to deal with these kinds of situations any longer. I explained that supervisors are out of place about 20% of the time. That's one out of every five shifts. This is because they have those regular responsibilities. They still have to go to court, they still have to do all the mandatory training and developmental training, they still get to take vacation with their families. There was a time when having two young officers in town by themselves wasn't necessarily that concerning, but it is concerning for us now. I was on a telephone call yesterday. I sit on the chief's advisory board for the League of Municipalities, and we were discussing liability claims across the state. And one of the top liability claims where municipalities are being sued is for lack of supervision. Our recommendation and resolution is to add two watch commanders to the patrol division. This year, our budget requests two mid-level managers, lieutenants, that will be responsible for filling in when first-line supervisors are out of place. Each lieutenant will oversee two squads and work a mid-shift, and then they'll adjust their schedules as needed to fill in for the supervisors who are out of place. Additionally, watch commanders will be responsible for the on-the-job training for new sergeants. For the four sergeants you see up there, three of them have less than six years of experience. We are a young department, and we need to have better on-the-job training for new supervisors. Some of this might sound familiar because we're facing some of the same issues that the fire department is experiencing with needing more supervisors for two shifts. The last personnel request I have is for a detective. You heard me share some justifications for this position last year, as I talked about the need for being more proactive with gang and drug investigations. That need continues, but we have some additional demand on our detective division coming. In the fall, our department will be kicking off the CARE Initiative. This is the co-responder program that will employ master's-level interns to work with families of children impacted by violence and trauma. We've seen significant increases in cases involving kids over the last several years. Early indications are that 2023 will be even higher than 2022. We know that children who are impacted by violence are more likely to become young offenders and to recidivate as they grow into adulthood. There is more that we can be doing to disrupt the pattern of behavior that leads to criminal conduct, and we can do that through providing resources to families early on. I want to tell you about a story about a kid who lives here in East Wake. When he was nine years old, he witnessed his uncle being shot and killed right in front of him. A couple of weeks later, Officer Carrie Cam Pagna, at the time, went to have lunch at the elementary school, and the teachers pointed out that this young man had witnessed a violent traumatic event. Carrie sat down to talk with him and developed a little bit of rapport. A couple of years later, Carrie interacted with the young man again... Can you hear me? ...when he was caught breaking into cars. And when he saw Officer Cam Pagna, he broke down and started crying because he had disappointed her. But she had a law enforcement responsibility that day, and that young man entered into the criminal justice system. Two summers ago, here in Zebulon, he shot at a family member, he robbed somebody coming out of a grocery store, and he broke into three churches. This young man and his friends caused a lot of unease in our community two summers ago. The sense of safety for the people who live here was impacted by this individual. So let's think about how that could look different. If we could have intervened when he witnessed the murder of his uncle when he was nine years old and offered services to his family, whether it be counseling, therapy, financial assistance, anger management, whatever resources that their family needed, maybe he would not have been in Zebulon two summers ago, getting into the trouble that he did and causing that sense of unease amongst our community members. The CARE Initiative is going to take more than the social worker interns. It is going to require the work of our detectives to support them. In addition to being more proactive with gangs and drugs, our detective division will take on a major role with the CARE Initiative. Obviously, anytime you add new positions, other lines are going to be impacted. So my budget includes increases in several different operational lines associated with uniforms and equipment for new hires. That is the conclusion of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments from the board? Commissioner Harrison?
Chief, so with the CARE Initiative and with this officer that will be a little more centered, what exactly is the goal of this, for this role? Would it be to partner with social workers to act on behalf of... What is the goal? What are we aiming to get or to service our youth with this position?
So our intent is to intervene early. We're not waiting for the children to become offenders. We are interacting with them and their families at the first incident of trauma. So they may be a witness to a domestic violence event. And recognizing that kids who witness violence and who witness trauma often become offenders, we're going to intervene earlier. So the social workers will have follow-up contact with the family. And we can't send social worker interns out to do these follow-ups by themselves. And we can't send social worker interns out to do these follow-ups by themselves. So the detective will have a lot of responsibility of working with the social worker interns to ensure a safe environment for them, but allowing the social worker and the intern to manage the resource referrals. So the officer might go with, the detective go with, make the introduction and then step back and allow the interns to manage the resource referral. The time that's going to be, we anticipate the time needed for this event or for this project to be significant in addition to what they're already doing.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Will the social worker be the school social worker to each?
No, we are employing masters-level interns from NC State and NC Central.
I would just say in the context of this and what you just said, I would hope that this role would also, if we were to have this role, would also do things to be proactive instead of the intervention once something has happened. So maybe coming up with some type of programming, which you all already do a great job, but more of an emphasis on at-risk youth, if this is a direction, so that we are taking measures to catch them before we have to intervene.
Right.
So that's what I was, that's what I'm thinking, but, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jackie.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Chief.
Next up is our Parks and Recreation Director, Sheila Long.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the board. Thank you for letting me talk with you about Parks and Recreation and what we see as our needs for the upcoming budget year to serve our citizens. I want to start about talking about our new residents. We often talk about our recreation impact fee in terms of our capital improvement plan and the need to provide future park spaces and amenities to serve our citizens that are coming into the community. But I want to shape that story a little bit different. So what exactly does that $4.8 million actually mean? It means that there are 1,612 new homes that are coming into our community. These homes have either been planted or received their certificate of occupancy. That equals 4,481 new residents that are here now or going to be here soon. These new residents are children wanting new experiences, they are coalitions, nonprofits, civic groups that are looking to network and serve our community and find partnerships. And our department has been able to help facilitate some of that and be a part of that. There are older residents coming into our community with new desires, there are new families, there are growing families, there are businesses that are coming into our community wanting to connect with the community. There are people with special interests, there are young adults looking to get engaged, there are also people that have disabilities or may need adapted programming so that we can have a more inclusive environment. Something that is important to note is all of these needs in our community are competing for the, have competing interests for the capacity of the Parks and Rec Department. An example of competing capacity, these are two examples of recent comments that the Parks and Recreation has gotten. One, a response to open gym times, one, a response to pickleball play. Both of these are commenting on wanting access to the community center during after-hour, like after the workday timeframes. So we are continually being met with the desires of the community. They want the same space, the same time, they have very similar needs, but we have limited capacity. So I want to take a minute to look about, talk with y'all about what some of these capacity issues are and how we can move forward. But I think going through this slide is important. When we look at our community center, while we have some smaller rooms, our primary programming space is our gym. It's the largest space that we have. The gym is not even a full-size basketball court. It serves as basketball where we play rec league, we have summer camps, we have clinics, and we have open gym. But it is also where we offer nature programming, we offer adult fitness, we have volleyball, we have pickleball, we have special event-type programs such as bingo, we have youth birthday parties, we have preschool programs that are happening in this space, we have STEAM programs, it's a banquet space, it's a walking track. I want to talk about a specific example of how our capacity is impacting our programs and the needs of our community. When we have our winter basketball program, we are currently offering space for our kids to play six days a week. They are playing primarily at the community center. We have rented the middle school gym for three days a week in order to meet the needs of our community. When we are doing this, we are having to end our pickleball play in the evenings, our line dancing has to move to one of our smaller activity rooms, we will have registration limited at 15, but we will have people that have actually taken the time to sign up on the waitlist as far up to 16. Our weeknight youth open gym has to end, we have limited availability for community rentals, we have a limited availability for our weekend preschool programming because we have to do a lot of that during the day on weekdays. So that for working parents that, or homes that have two working parents or even a single family that has one working parent, they need weekend access. We have limited availability for those programs. We are having a limited access for adult gym. It could be, adult open gym is not just basketball, it could be pickleball, it could be volleyball, it could be badminton, it could be a variety of different interests as our community grows. So what do we do about it? We're going to first talk about athletics. Our athletics programming has seen substantial growth. Just this year, to date, our registration over last year has increased nearly 40% in our athletics. We have over 1,300 participants that we are serving. If I look specifically at our spring soccer program, it has grown by over 70% since 2022. That's just one program. This year, we are serving 129 teams is what, as we compile our teams for spring, we're expecting to have this year 129 total teams for this fiscal year. When we have more participants, we have more teams, we have more use of our playing spaces, we have to provide more staff in order to support these teams and our practices and their games. We have increased general league expenses such as uniforms, sanctions, equipment, and trophies. Without additional resources, as we meet the needs of our growing community, we will have to enter into caps on our leagues. We strive not to create barriers for our participants. When we have to cap our programs, we start to create barriers for our low-income community members because they are, there are limited accesses here or opportunities here in Zebulon for recreation-type play. Not all desire play is a municipal recreation league, but there aren't many other opportunities here. And so if we start to cap our programs, these individuals are having to go outside of the community in order to access that. That is a new barrier. An example of that is our basketball league this year. Based on the availability that we were able to secure with Zebulon Elementary or Middle School and the space that we had at the community center, we only had nine spots of it remaining in our basketball program this year. If we don't continue to invest in expanding these opportunities, we are not going to be able to meet our community needs. Right now, we do try to continue to expand our maximums in order to meet these needs. And an example of this, you will see a budget amendment in March because we have had so much growth in our athletics to help us cover the additional expenses in order to cover staff and uniforms. To meet our needs, we are going to have to increase our part-time staffing. We would like to expand use of the middle school gym to five days a week. We also are going to have to increase our uniform and general supply for league expenses. Our goal for expanding middle school use to five days a week is, one, to meet the growth of the actual participation, but, two, we really want to push as much as we can out of the community center for our league play to create other opportunities for recreation at the community center. We are also responding to growth in our general programming area. So our recreation division oversees your special events, programs like bingo, nature programs, open gym, and much more. In 2013, we had a population of 4,600 people. We had two programmers at that time and we offered 92 programs, not counting your athletics. In 2023, our population was 10,000 people. We offered 186 programs with only two programmers. We are meeting capacity of what we can offer with the existing staff in addition to the existing facilities. Our summer camp registration increased by 77% last year alone. Now, we recognize that we made substantial overhauls into the summer camp programs that we offered. We were doing everything we could to maximize the participation. We are near capacity, we neared capacity in almost all of our summer camps. We expect to maintain that, but we have limited room to grow. Our general programming registration last year grew by 134%. We recognize that part of that is because we really looked for creative opportunities to recognize that everybody doesn't need a structured program. People can lead themselves in recreation sometimes, or actually a lot of times, and they don't always want structured programming, they just want opportunities to recreate. One thing that we tried was developing a preschool playroom and creating times for members of the community to meet for preschool ages to play. We have had great response to that effort and so that has inflated that 134% a little bit, but if we were to pull the preschool play out, we still had over 60% increase in our general program registration. So the observations that we're currently seeing in our recreation division is that we do have a planning capacity. We also have substantial increase in the use of the community center. We have limited opportunity to offer new programs, we have limited access to external facilities in our community that will meet recreational needs. We are still, we explore every opportunity that we can, so we will continue to do that. We have an increased support of events that are not only ones that we offer, but also events that others in the community offer. We also are engaging in ongoing outreach efforts. When our local schools are having PTO events and nights, when our churches are having festivals, when HOAs have events, we are willing and wanting to get out into the community and meet our citizens where they are. And participating in these types of events and outreach is important. I'm going to come back to the staff safety and the limited after-school in just a second because I'm going to talk about those together. But we are also, as we've talked about several times tonight, having limited opportunity for open play. When it comes to our staff safety, we have long-run the community center on what I call a shoestring budget. It was budgeted basically to be operated by one person. That one person is managing the phone, registration, people walking in the door, keeping the facility clean, making sure the programs have what they need, responding to customer question or participant questions, instructor questions. We staff specific programs, but not necessarily all programs have to have a specific staff person, such as like a line dancing class, our instructor can handle that without an additional staff member. But this creates safety concerns. And we often find the person that's scheduled to work our front desk is often pulled away from it to be able to address cleaning the bathroom as we have had increased use in our facility. Without dedicated people on staff to be able to help keep our facility clean, they are being pulled away from those duties to provide customer service in order to address items in the facility, to set up for programs, to respond to other needs. It also creates a safety issue at times where the facility is open late at night where there isn't necessarily a program going on. So I've been asked, why does the community center say it closes at seven? Well, the reason why our operating hours are seven is because almost, more than often, we are there with programming until after eight. But I want to be able to ensure that our staff is safe. And so if there are not programs in that building, we want to be able to close so that staff can leave because there's only one person there. But it is not often that we are actually closing at seven because there are enough programs happening and enough going on and enough demand for us to continue, for us to be there. But that's a difference in what an operating hour is and what we are actually offering in our programming. We have limited after-school opportunity because, again, it's a staffing issue. I can't take in unregistered participants where we have not planned for and have proper staffing to oversee children. We cannot operate like a traditional community center because we are not staffed to do that. We would love to do that, we think that there is a need for that, but we have to have staff in place to ensure that these kids are safe and they are engaging in productive play experiences and recreation experiences and having opportunities to have mentorship and just overall great life experiences that we want to help be a part of. So our response needs, we need to invest in another programmer. We have the same level of programming that, or programming staff as we had 10 years ago and our population has substantially increased. In 2023, you were 4,600 people. Our 2025 budget is planning for 13,000 citizens. If we want to meet the needs of our community, we're going to have to invest in another programmer. We're going to have to invest in additional part-time staff, not just staff the community center, but also to support the additional programming. We are also going to have to invest and continue contracting for programming, bringing in additional partners so we can expand these programs, which equals additional funding for supplies and equipment. Now we'll shift to our parks. You've seen this slide before. We have 167 acres of parkland or open space that is managed by the Zebulon Parks and Rec Department. You increased that by almost two acres this year. In addition, there are 2.25 miles of greenway that we support and there's also an additional 3.45 miles that are expected to be coming to the town of Zebulon in public greenway. Not only are we engaging and managing this open space, but our Parks and Facilities crew are supporting our athletic programming. but our Parks and Facilities crew are supporting our athletic programming for all of the additional teams and the additional field spaces that we're having to identify. They're having to maintain the turf. They're dragging our fields. They're painting the lines. But they're also supporting special projects and initiatives. And this is where I'll talk about Tree City and B City USA. These are sustainable-related initiatives that the town has engaged in or sought to engage in. We asked the board for an opportunity to hire a sustainability intern before just jumping into the B City program. And the reason for that is, if you look at our master plan, there is an interest in engaging in sustainability at large and participating in pollinator gardens, nature learning experiences, and celebrating our environment. We worked with a sustainability intern to engage the public and also to do an assessment of our internal operations. We have seen a holistic support for, or support for holistic approach that would not just be limited to Tree City and B City. Our recommendation is going to be to the board that you look at establishing a sustainability committee and to move forward with your B City resolution. We will be coming before you very soon with both of those items for, with a proposal and discussion. And I'm going to take a second to talk about the sustainability committee. We'll go into more detail about this. But our recommendation is that a sustainability committee be a combination of staff, your appointed boards, and community members or partners that we work with in a sustainability environment to move the town forward. This will include everything from Tree City to B City, initiatives to recycling and energy. The impacts we're seeing of growth in our community is that obviously we are having heavier use of our park system. That is creating newer cleanup issues that we're having to address, but it's also just compounding. It is growing. And as we are doing more programs, we're having to respond to more cleanup for our programs as well. There's more wear and tear on our park system and our amenities. We have increased athletic use. We have limited opportunity for preventative maintenance. I'm going to talk about that in just a second. And if you recall, we received $500,000 from Partif to move forward with Little River Park improvements. We are preparing for that as well as preparing for additional greenway acceptance. We also are, our park staff are having to support our events as well as some of the other events that are occurring in town. Now I'm going to talk about the limited preventative maintenance a little bit. Our peak grass season, we have 120 available full-time maintenance worker hours. We spend 112 hours cutting grass and caring for general, like, basic landscaping maintenance. That gives us eight hours each week to travel to jobs, for training, events, care for other park needs. And eight hours, that's if one employee is sick or takes vacation that day, that has an impact on the workload of our staff. Without additional staff, we are going to have to contract out more, which is also an additional cost, or we are going to have to change the standards of how we maintain our park system. As we grow and continue to meet the needs of our community, we need to acquire two additional maintenance workers. We also want to acquire a facility maintenance worker. A facility maintenance worker will help us maintain the cleanliness of our parks as well as help us with the cleanliness of the community center. And we will have to increase the cost of our supplies and materials. As we acquire additional maintenance workers, it will create opportunities for us to engage in preventative maintenance, which, as I just mentioned, but I failed to go into it, was when we are limited in the hours that we have outside of grass-cutting season to just eight, we are limited in the maintenance that we can engage in. We are going to be just responsive. If we can have additional support on our maintenance team, we can be not just more responsive to the issues that are arising in real time, but we can be preventative and forward-thinking as we respond to the needs in our park system. As we do that, the cost of supplies will increase as we become more preventative maintenance-minded. We also recognize that in order to do this work, there will be an increase in equipment that will be needed to serve their uses. And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to CIP. While we meet our current needs, we also have to think about our future. Our master plan goals, I'm going to pull four of our goals to highlight, but some primary initiatives there are to engage our community members, collaborate with our developers, to be effective and innovative in practices in our park system, as well as to ensure that our citizens have equitable access to recreation. Our master plan looked at, in order to meet these goals, what projects would be required in order to meet those needs. And with the community's engagement, there were nearly $60 million worth of projects that were identified. We are in the process of implementing a lot of, or not a lot, but a good amount of the projects that were identified for the short term. The short term of a master plan included things like beginning development of Little River Park as well as maintenance needs or general upkeep and maintenance of existing facilities. As we continue to grow, we are going to have to acquire additional property, and we're going to have to plan for that. We want to be doing that in a holistic manner. Having a park planner will allow us to do that. We will be able to work with our NTRC review processes and be more collaborative with our planning department and be more collaborative with developers as they come into town. We can raise the bar for the expectation of what is going into developments by working with these developers to offer quality products for our incoming citizens. A park planner will be able to obviously support our park planning, but it can also help us with project management and oversight. But what I think is most important, that's reflective in our master plan, is that we keep our community at the heart. We engage our community in our planning. An example of that is Gil Street Park. We began a playground engagement process. This is not necessarily the norm. When a playground is in place and is slated to be removed and a new structure coming in, it is not the norm. It is not commonplace for you to necessarily always go back to the community and get their opinions on what they want out of a playground. When you're building a new park, there are oftentimes a lot of engagement there. But we feel that with this particular community, it was important, if we took our master plan to heart and we wanted to meet, ensure that we were meeting the needs of the community, that as we planned for the design of the new playground, that our community's input was taken. In order to do this, we brought in contracted help. This would be something that a park planner would be able to lead, and it could be more personalized, and we could have continued great conversations with our community. I know you're interested in what came out of the Playground Engagement Summary. While we saw your traditional playground interests, such as climbing elements, spinning elements, and sliding, I think it's important to recognize that people actually have interest in features in the playground for older adults and teens, or older teens and adults. This isn't necessarily uncommon. We are seeing playgrounds that are more modern, that have amenities in them or features that are attractive to teens, specifically, and even some adults while they're playing with their kids, they get really excited. Shade structures is very much a growing interest. You would accept, or assume that you're going to see that there's an interest in that. People are more conscious of being exposed to the sun, and so play structures with shades are very commonplace now. But what stood out is there was a great desire for an accessible, inclusive experience in sensory elements. While the purpose of this engagement was to get feedback on the community, we did ask if there were other amenities that the community was interested in. Supporting park amenities that the community shared with us, the top three were restrooms, walkways, and security lighting. To sum up our staffing requests for 2025, what you see in blue is our existing staff. As we seek to serve that town of possibly 13,000 people in 2025, we are looking to add the park planner, the facility worker, two maintenance workers, and a program coordinator. And we'll want to take a second just to highlight and just give you a little preview of some conversations we'll have for your CIP discussions in, I believe, what will be two months from now. So as we grow our staff and grow how we're supporting our park system, there will be a need to grow our fleet and equipment. Our disc golf course is more than 20 years old. It needs investment. We need to make some improvements there for it to continue to be a showpiece for the town of Zebulon. There's a great need for pickleball courts. I have shown a municipal park map. I'm not suggesting that this is absolutely where pickleball courts need to go. I'm just showing that if we look at the space the town currently owns, open space that the town owns, this is an option. Beside the soccer field, thank you, Joe. Yeah, Joe's got it. So this is an option where you can be away from residents or residential dwellings and offer six pickleball courts. There are other uses that you may find you won't for this site. We may need it for soccer. If we don't acquire additional property, we are running out to be able to meet the needs of our athletic programming, but you are also seeing other needs such as pickleball. So we'll have to have a conversation about how are we going to meet that need, if we're able to meet that need, or if we're going to have to wait on that need. The Whitley Park Playground, while some of the playground is a little bit newer, still has some age on it, but it has a lot of life left still. But the traditional deck and slide system is very old. Got pieces on it that can't be replaced, and it's not as engaging of a play system. And so it is recommended that that be replaced. We'd like to engage in some discussion with Wake County Public School. We have a great opportunity as our community grows and they are planning for the future to engage in conversation with Zebulon Elementary School on the future of that site to include our joint-use park there. We'll continue to have conversations about Gil Street Park. The Zebulon Community Park Bridge, as you recall, there was two instances of a tree falling, two different trees, falling on the bridge, and it was no longer safe and we had to remove it. So this bridge went through the woods and came in behind the church there on Barbie Street. This was not an official trailhead. This was a project from a long time ago that we worked on. I think a Boy Scout had built the bridge at one point. And then when we put in the paved path, I had worked with, I believe it was Griffin Todd at the time, to create a trail from that bridge to the church. That bridge obviously is out now, but I think it's an important connection to the community on Barbie Street. And we would like to work with the church to establish a proper trailhead and entrance to the park for that community. The community center floor is 15 years old now. If you've played basketball in there or you've tried to play pickleball, then you probably know there are dead spots throughout that floor. We are going to recommend replacement of that floor. Naturally, property acquisition is something that we are going to have to continue to talk about and look at. We want to meet the needs of this growing population. There are things from a new community center that we need, new recreation, field space. There's just a lot of need for us to be able to serve our citizens, and we'll have to continue those discussions. Our open space standards is something that we've talked about, but I want to be really clear that this is multifaceted. We've talked about wanting to revisit the UDO and how amenities are classified within the UDO to ensure that our citizens are going to get the best quality that they can get when these developers are coming to town. We also want to do that. We also want to develop design standards for amenities. And I'm going to give the example from your Monday night joint-public hearing. When a developer claims that it's going to be a soccer field or an athletic field, what is classifying it as an athletic field versus just a different open space? How is it being maintained? What is in place? Is there grade to it? Is there irrigation? Is it going to be marked? Are there permanent soccer goals? Are there temporary soccer goals? What is classifying this as athletic space versus open space? We also want to create those standards internally. Our master plan calls for consistency within the design of our park system. It's a brand in and of itself, and so we want to establish those standards. We want to work with our community to set the standard for what is a neighborhood park? What is a community park? What are the things that we want at a minimum in these places? And then what is our process to work with the community when we're designing these parks to ensure that they're meeting the needs of our citizens? And I'll put in here the fields at Whitley Park. As I said, everything is on the table at this point when it comes to meeting the needs of our soccer programming and our T-ball and baseball. The former pool site, we have measured it. We could fit four U soccer fields there. I will say, it is not ideal. If we have to do it, we're going to have to invest in it. We're going to have to make sure that it is level. It's a safe working or a safe playing space and that we provide a good turf surface there. But you are going to run into some user conflicts, and that park is heavily used on Saturday mornings. And the primary time for our four U to play is on Saturday mornings. But I don't know that this concentration is going to be most important at this site. So we're looking, we're the most important use of this site, or it's going to provide the best experience. So we are looking at everything that we can. It is possible, you saw us play some out here on the unfenced open space side. That's not proper turf. It's not very level. It worked, but it wasn't ideal. As we continue to grow, you may see, if we don't acquire additional property or we don't find other spaces, which everything's on the table, we're looking at it all, you may see us playing on the front lawn at Town Hall. Available to answer any questions.
Before we get into our questions about parks, let's take a 10-minute break. Questions for... Direct along?
I have one question. Well, could you not lead into more? When we ended just now, you were talking about possibilities. And, you know, I want to stay on the possibilities. What is, what are the, what is the possibility that Gil Street Park, which is currently a neighborhood park, could become a community park? Or if that is not possible, is there a possibility that there could be a park within that area? Or could we, is there a way to turn Gil Street Park into a community park? That's the first question.
Yep, so a community park, a community park by general standard is going to be about 20 acres or more.
Okay.
So you would want to look in the area to see, to be able, because for it to be a community, you're looking for people from the outside to come in. I think what, when it comes to Gil Street Park and that community, and serving our community at large, but specifically the community of Gil Street, I think that there's a lot of opportunity for us to have broader conversations about the needs of the citizens. The need, like what are they seeing that impacts them on a daily basis? What would improve their lives? Because there could be park elements, but there could be other things that we could incorporate into a broader response and be able to actually provide them what they are looking for. So to me, the approach isn't how do we make it a community park? It's what do y'all really need? And then as a community, like we're gonna, we have to have intentional conversations. And we're going to hear a lot of things. We don't know, it is what would make their lives better? Like space to get trainings, to enter into the workforce? Is it access to food? Is it housing? Being able to stay in their homes? There's just a lot of community-related discussion that I think would really be helpful to understand. Do we... Is, is it creating a community park there the answer? Or is creating a park that has a bigger scope? Right? So if you were, if I could, if I just had a magic wand and could say, this is what that community needs, without having those discussions and I have that crystal ball? I mean, in my perfect world, I would love to build, find some property to be able, that still meets that community, and we could build a proper neighborhood park. Because the reality is, it's under two acres. It doesn't meet the needs of a neighborhood park. It's, it doesn't come close to it. We need to, I would love to be able to provide a proper neighborhood park. I think that community would benefit from a community space that we staff and can run programs out of, that they have access to for workforce training in an accessible manner. There's just so many things that I think that we could do for that community. But I think it's really going to start with a conversation with the community at large, not just about parks, but what their needs are.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think in one of the conversations that we had mentioned in the past was maybe having some kind of collaboration with the church that's already existing there. Could you expound on that?
Yeah, so this idea actually came from a comment that Commissioner Harrison had made just offhand one day. And you probably, it was probably a year ago, that you grew up on those streets. You grew up in that park and you used to run over to the church because you went to church there and you would run over there to go to the bathroom. You probably don't even remember that conversation, but it's stuck in my head. And we actually just talked about this exercise just a minute ago. Whenever we're faced with an interesting idea or challenge or opportunity, I like to work with my staff and I call it crazy on the table. So let's just sit down and let's just think about to meet, we've been asked to serve this need, what are our options? And one of the things that we talked about was the opportunity to engage with the established church that is right there at Gil Street Park. And they are serving that community and work with them to create a relationship and meet our community where they are. But also to create an opportunity to run programs out of that space. And in that, we could maybe have a partnership with it. And this would be them having to be willing to work with us to have access to that facility for bathrooms near in peak times. Because we can start to see those trends of when the park is being used. You probably wouldn't be surprised to know that what we've seen, our peak use times are actually Sunday afternoons after church. So my guess would be that people that are leaving church and coming over there already. And so figuring out a way to have conversations, one with the community, back to that question, but then with this church to see if there is some collaboration that we can engage in to better serve the community. That's where our mindset is right now.
But that's not looking into the long-term?
That's a short-term.
Okay.
Me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just to meet the need of now.
You had mentioned something about conversations with Wake County Schools as far as utilization of space. I know we got a new high school that's supposed to be secretly coming on board. Any thoughts about utilizing some of their possible space for maybe like tennis courts or whatever?
Yeah, so it's, Wake County Public Schools' general practice to work with communities when they're going in to build new schools, to try to work with the community, to engage in joint use agreements. It actually benefits the public schools just as much as it benefits us because municipalities typically maintain those facilities at a higher standard. So the students can get a higher quality of maintenance and then we can have that partnership and access to those facilities when the school is not in session. So I know that as conversations have been had with the planning department and the real estate level of Wake County Public Schools, that they are aware of our interest and our desire for partnership. I have had conversations on my joint use side, not just on the incoming parks or incoming schools, but also the existing schools that may have substantial renovations in the future to meet the needs of our community.
Because I think what, is it Zebulon Elementary? Supposed to have substantial renovations?
That's what I hear.
Okay, so.
And that's, we're trying to push that conversation to just make sure that as that discussion is being had, that we are also considering the future needs of our recreation and that we provide a good product for our kids.
Sure.
And of course, you know, the old pickleball versus tennis courts.
Yeah.
Pickleball players don't like tennis players. Tennis players don't like pickleball players.
Welcome to net sports in America.
I've played both and I'm not going to tip my hat to which one. But a couple more tennis courts and maybe four outdoor pickleball courts way off in the woods somewhere would be, would be nice.
You want to put the pickleball courts in the woods or the tennis courts in the woods?
He can't say. She's trying to trick you up, don't let her.
I've heard people say pickleball courts are noisy.
They are.
But now, in, well, in Virginia Beach, maybe it's just noisy. But the people that have them in their neighborhoods don't complain. I've had talked with some people up there.
Yeah, nationwide, there are overwhelming issues in park systems that have placed pickleball courts in residential areas. There are standards that they are constantly changing on the distance that you need to be away from a house when you install pickleball courts. So that's why my recommendation would not to be pickled, put pickleball courts at Whitley Park. You're too close to neighbors. It is very loud and we would be dealing with a lot of complaints. So we need to be looking for a space. Ideally, if you had a community park-sized location where you could kind of centralize that and keep it away from dwellings, that'd be great. A facility like a campus like this, it would be nice, but not necessarily the answer. So we, we have a lot of potential. But yeah, you don't, you want to be careful about combining conflicting uses. So pickleball and tennis, there's not enough tennis in a lot of communities and then there's not enough pickleball. You got to be careful painting pickleball lines on tennis courts because it's user conflict when you already don't have enough. So we, we really need to address that, I agree, Mayor.
I know, I think Knightdale, they got a grant from the United States Tennis Association to build new tennis courts. One of the stipulations was, don't put a pickleball court there.
Absolutely.
So.
Pickleball does the same thing. I sat in a conference, I think it was in December, about, specifically about pickleball and the do's and don'ts.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Miles?
Can you elaborate a little bit on the collaboration you visualize for the church, for that park over there?
I mean, I think there's a lot to be envisioned there. It's going to start with a conversation with, really, the community and the church to understand what that looks like, if they're even open to it. But I, I think that that is an opportunity that we need to explore to see if we could work with them to staff it, offer programming, drop-in type programming, so that we can meet our citizens where they are. And while we're there, I mean, there could be access to bathrooms in an interim. We haven't engaged the church, so that's all speculative. These are conversations that we began internally, trying to think outside of the box. If we try to do everything ourselves and we keep ourselves in the box, we're not going to be successful. And so this was, like I said, when we did Crazy on the Table, it was what can we do with the church? And so that's just a conversation to be had on what is possible and what they're willing to, if they're willing, if that meets their needs. We, we don't know what that looks like yet.
If you'd like to, just to let you know, because of why my uncle's the pastor at church?
I recall that.
So if you'd like that conversation to be had, we can kind of start that. Reach out to me, let me know.
Yeah.
If I can help in any way.
Yeah, so we've just recently been brain- Yeah, so we've just recently been brainstorming this and so I was preparing for this presentation and our budget submission and so we were kind of caught up. But if you would love to shoot me an email to help us connect, I would love to do that.
I would definitely do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
She was just wondering, we're talking about, you know, the demands with the community center that we have, have you guys been in conversation about what it would like for a second community center?
Yeah, so our master plan calls for a multi-purpose recreation facility and we desperately need that. It was a little bit further out because it was a larger investment for the town. And when our master plan was done, we were still somewhat, we had been a town that didn't have a master plan in direction for investment in our parks and so there wasn't a history of investment in our park system. So our master plan recognized the availability of funds and what the ongoing, like the past investment in capital perspective. And so we recognized a gradual increase to that investment from the town, but also the recreation impact fee and how long it was going to take to build that up, as well as we will probably need to enter into a bond conversation. I think most important, as we have those discussions about, you know, what investment the town wants to make in recreation, do we go after a bond, but we really have to talk about location. So our master plan identified, because it was property that the town had access to, we identified the Five Counties Stadium property, a part of that as an opportunity for us to build a multi-purpose recreation facility and aquatic center. We just need to discuss whether or not that is still something that we want to pursue or are we looking for other properties that could meet those needs? Or do we have existing properties that could meet needs in space-wise? If not for all of it, for part of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. But I like what you're thinking.
It's needed, obviously.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Miles?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you're good.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
The last budget presentation of the evening is from Community and Economic Development, and I'll recognize Shannon Johnson.
Mayor, Commissioners. All right, you have to tell me which one again. So tonight, I'm going to go over the strategic plan, where we are with that, give you some updates and some findings, and then the actions and activities that are planned for FY '25 and then some additional projects I'll talk about that you'll see in detail when we do capital improvement budgeting. So for the strategic plan, we are currently conducting the business roundtables. That's where we have a group of business people that, you know, focus on their needs and the future business needs of the community. So that's happening right now. We have one session last week and we have another session next week and then in the beginning of March. The community survey is completed. The community input sessions, which many of you attended, are completed. And a presentation of the draft plan will come to you in April or May. You will get a short present, you'll get the plan, the draft plan, you'll get a short presentation and then you'll have time to offer your feedback to the consultant that's working on this project and then they will be able to incorporate your feedback into the final product. And that'll be in June. So the findings for the community survey, we had a bilingual online survey with multiple choice and write-in answers, 151 participants. And housing affordability, family ties, quality of life, local character and charm were why people live here currently. And then what people want, more restaurants, entertainment and grocery stores, higher paying jobs were the top in those categories. The community engagement sessions, we had three sessions with 72 participants. The average participant, you can see the demographics there, has lived in Zebulon for one to four years. The average participant is over 45 years old and the average participant in those community engagement sessions works outside of Zebulon. There were overall themes with a little bit of prioritized detail. The first theme I'm going to show you is infrastructure. Public transportation within town and surrounding was number one in infrastructure. Roads and pathways, improved road sidewalks, bike lanes was number two. And utility improvements, water, sewer and internet was the number three in infrastructure. For businesses, we had entertainment, youth and family, healthcare, primary dentist, mental health, and grocery stores, exercise facilities and sports options. In particular, it was pool, gym, pickleball, YMCA, Harris Teeter Publix, Aldi, Lidl. So no real surprises there. However, there was a strong aversion to big box stores and strong support for uplifting local businesses. In quality of life, education and training, more schools and access to Wake Tech and entrepreneurship program was number one. Housing, affordable housing, accessible or attainable housing and more housing variety. So what is accessible or attainable means is rental housing, workforce housing, apartments, starter home communities, maybe even, you know, multi-use communities. So it would be apartments, townhomes and mixed retail and services. We talked about this before, grocery store, exercise facilities and sports. And then town support is to, they requested to have a liaison to act as a one-stop-shop resource for, to assist businesses with grants, loans and incentives for startups. That person would be accessible and they would have well-communicated resources and public services. This was in reaction to many different topics. It was about permitting, it was about starting a business. It didn't have any one real theme that prompted this, but because it was mentioned in different areas of government services, they wrapped it up into one line item. So at the end of these sessions, they would ask the groups to come up with one word that they would envision the ideal economy of Zebulon to be. And so when you see that word cloud, it's, the size of the words is by the numerous times it was mentioned. So obviously, growing was the number one answer to what a thriving economy in Zebulon would look like. And then thriving, and then diversity. And then I find it interesting that the next ones are action, fluid, inclusive, competitive, community. They're all wonderful. It really shows that so many of our residents and especially the ones that participated are interested in seeing, you know, our community thrive and grow. And so lastly, for that piece, I lost my way in this sea of papers. The quote here, there we go. I don't know if you can see that, but I'm going to read it out so everyone can see it. It was a quote, there were several quotes. This is the one that our consultants chose to include in a summary report. "Incentivize growth that all, minority and women-owned businesses included, can be proud of." "Zebulon should be proactive about defining and identifying that and steer future investment instead of investment deciding our identity." And so that quote is exactly why we're doing this process, to create this plan. We will have a prioritized list with areas of focus. For instance, we currently have a small pipeline of entrepreneurs from NC State that chose Zebulon to grow their business. And as we explore how to strengthen that naturally occurring pipeline, we do need, do we need incubator space? For instance, Tethys Company located here, they have a plant-based absorbancy product. They located here from NC State. They grew so quickly and we weren't able to find a space, they weren't able to find a space to move into and they had to move out of town. They're a success story that had to leave town because we didn't have products. So does that mean we need more flex space? Do we need to convince an investor to create that for us? The findings of the plan will give us more direction in where we focus our efforts in investment going forward, especially for the entrepreneurial part of our economy. Another example is the plan will give us some industries to target. Right now, every industry is a target, but if we know certain industries will suit us better than others, then we can start preparing to recruit those types of companies and as Holly Springs did 20 years ago. And you may have all heard this story, but I'm going to say it again. They decided 20 years ago to be a space for biotech. And in doing that, they assembled many parcels of land. Took a long time to do that. They improved their infrastructure to be able to suit the needs of biotech firms. And they landed Fujifilm Diocent a $2 billion investment, 725 jobs that are averaging right around 80,000 per year. So it took them two decades and a lot of hard work. I don't think it will probably take us that long to do what we want to do, but the findings that we will get from the work that's being done will give us direction and we will be able to determine if there's infrastructure, investment or how we go about preparing ourselves to really be desirable for those industries. So actions and activities, this is the short range of what I'm going to accomplish over the next year. One of the things that happens regularly is that I respond to RFIs. And an RFI is a request for information. And they come to the North Carolina Economic Development Partnership and then the partnership sends them to Wake County Economic Development and they distribute those requests to each municipality. And what that request will say is, like, it'll say the date, today. It's due tomorrow at noon or Monday at 3:00. Usually it's one or two days turnaround. We need 50 acres of land. We need a 300,000 square foot building with 22-foot ceilings and 6-inch floors and 53-inch column widths and seven bay doors. This is how much water they're going to use and this is how much electricity. And most of the time, you don't know what the industry is or you may have a hint, but you don't really know. You definitely don't know who the company is. It's kind of blind in that way. And so I take inventory of everything we have that's available and do we have anything that can match? And then I respond with, we're not going to be responding, we don't have product for you, or yes, here's the information, we have product. And I get about seven of those a month currently. We have a good economy, so that's a pretty good amount to get. And then developing marketing activities as part of the budget, I have added a marketing line item to economic development. There aren't many line items there to begin with, but I added marketing with a small amount just to get us started. There are very specific places I think we can start to let people know that we are open for business. And so we're starting with a light number for that. Mid-range is performing due diligence for priority properties to create shovel-ready sites. This is really a public-private partnership. So if we know what industries we're looking for and we know that there is a particular parcel or several parcels that have more capacity for water or utility upgrade, then I'm going to start talking to the owners of those parcels to see how they feel about selling to maybe that particular industry, somebody, a company in that particular industry. And then the part that the government plays is to partner with the property owner to perform some due diligence on those parcels, to have a product ready to go for when we're recruiting those industries. And it's kind of, when you recruit an industry and you say, recruit a company within an industry and you say, it's shovel-ready, you go to the top of the list. And there may be three or four of you at the top of the list, but that's how you get there. And so this would be not probably happening in the fiscal year, but the work getting to there will happen over the next fiscal year. And then long range, we will use the strategic plan, the final plan, to develop specific goals that'll be, you know, one, three, five-year goals. And then the plan would be revisited, you know, on that fourth or fifth year. Be updated then. Additional projects, this is the last part of the budget presentation. Managed studies to determine project feasibility. The Capital asks, we're going to have a stadium reuse feasibility study and potentially an MSD study if you choose to go that way. The next project is managing tasks related to the HUD Downtown Revitalization Grant. That grant, it covers a downtown master plan, utility, engineered utility analysis for downtown, which is very much needed. We kind of go project by project to understand where pipes and utilities are. It will have some beautification pieces. So as the master plan is finished and there's a design standard that looks good for downtown, the benches, trash cans and things of that sort will be purchased in line with that design. Worked with Public Works to understand what banners they have that they put up. So we'll be purchasing all-new banners for different holidays and celebrations through this grant. And some practical pieces that aren't as glamorous would be locating areas throughout the downtown to install pads and trash corrals, to have dumpsters versus 15 cans for each restaurant, that kind of thing. These are just necessary housekeeping items you have to do as you grow and we are fortunate enough to have the HUD grant to do that. It has taken a while to get things in place. There's an enormous amount of regulatory requirements to spend this money properly. And we're just about finished with all of those pieces and we'll be able to start utilizing those funds in the next few months. The last part of additional projects is to manage the National Register Historic District for Barbie Street. And this came from when the historic district was put in place in Zebulon a couple of years ago and approved just recently. The Barbie Street area was not part of that final product. And there's, but there's been money sitting there because they were going to, the town was going to take $20,000 and, you know, offer that up to kind of rework some pieces in. But that isn't what ended up happening between state historic preservation and however that went. So that money is still allotted in the economic development budget. And we can take those funds and start the research for the cultural, social, historical significance of the Barbie Street area and be able to get the first part of that analysis done. If you chose to move forward later and try to create a historic district, you would have the basic research completed and then have to hire a consultant to do that detailed work. The benefit of it is you have the history recorded. The second benefit of it is that if you do- The second benefit of it is that if you do move forward eventually with a historic district, then the historic tax credits apply to existing structures that are renovated through historic preservation. So that's another benefit of having it. And that is all for my presentation. I will be happy to take questions.
Any questions, comments from the board?
You can elaborate on the question, the Barbie Street project. So the $20,000 that we have sitting in the pot would go just to start researching those homes down there?
Yeah, so there's several phases to a historic district, and the first one is like a research piece where you gather every piece of data you can. The $20,000 wouldn't cover the full process, so it would be easier to take the research part and utilize a professional on their own to do that. And then, if you wanted to take that information and move forward with the historic district, you would hire the proper consultancy firm that does, they're very detailed, I mean, if you've ever seen one. It's incredible detail, and so it would benefit us to have a researcher do that part, and then the consulting firm do the next part if you wanted to move forward.
Thank you.
Just to kind of bring us up to date on that, could you share, or maybe Joka share, just how we came about the $20,000?
Yeah, gladly. So, Mayor, let me just back up because I realize as Shannon was talking that Commissioner Davis, probably since she wasn't on the board for that second bullet point, that HUD Downtown Revitalization Grant, that is a congressional earmark that the town secured through Representative David Price while he was still in office. And so it's a congressional earmark of $750,000 to revitalize downtown. As with any congressional earmark, after it is earmarked, it gets transferred to some federal agency. In this case, it got transferred to the Housing and Urban Development. Similar vein, we've got a congressional earmark of seven and a half million dollars associated with this fire station that will be back here. That's being administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Now to the mayor's question, the applicants for Zebulon's National Register Historic District omitted some culturally significant neighborhoods in the town of Zebulon. The town of Zebulon, as an offer to go into partnership with that applicant, offered that if they would hold off on resubmitting their application, the town would partner with them and do the necessary National Register Historic District evaluation that Shannon just referred to, and would kick in $20,000. The applicants, it was private application, they were obviously not interested in that and went ahead and proceeded to move forward with the application. The $20,000 however is still there and is available for you to continue to move forward with the National Register Historic District work for the area that Shannon just referred to.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that history.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Great job. Good to see you in the house.
Got another one.
Yeah, she's not done yet.
Need to hear some more.
Never mind. Take it all back.
I'm gonna give you a presentation about what municipal service districts are, and I just wanna give a little bit of like a clarification for anybody watching or for future viewers, maybe, people in the audience. The Main Street program exists through a national Main Street organization and through the North Carolina Department of Commerce. So like, you know, like a hierarchy, and then the towns and cities that get involved, you know, are pulled in through Commerce. The program itself gives a framework, guidelines, best practices, technical resources, all those kinds of things, but it does not give money. Doesn't give any money. And so the town is responsible for determining how they're gonna run their program. Some towns run their program, you know, if they have a robust economy and a great tax base, they just run their program. Most towns partner with a nonprofit. They will either have the nonprofit raise the funds on their own, or they will do the quasi, which most towns have now, switch to quasi, most of the Main Street towns in North Carolina. And that's what this board decided to go with, where really the bare bones of it is, the staff and overhead is handled by the town with a little bit of seed money to get some things going, and then the nonprofit gets itself up and running, and then it starts to gather some momentum and get grants and, you know, make some revenue from events and that kind of thing. So we are at the baby steps right now where the nonprofit's just getting rolling, and the town was just accepted in July of last year. And so some towns in the past, you know, places that have been around for 30 years or places that just started five years ago, they will choose to institute a municipal service district, which is, I'm gonna explain to you what that is, and that provides a small amount of seed money that can only be spent within the boundaries of that established downtown area. So now, we don't have an MSD. You guys have never had that brought to you as a decision to make, but I'm gonna give you information about what it is and all the steps you would have to go through to have one. And so you will be, you will understand much more how these work, and the public will understand how it works, and then we can go into any questions you may have about it. So what is an MSD? So as I said, it's a, this is by the state statute wording, it is a designated area where additional property tax is collected to provide specific services in that district. And that is in addition to the services that are already provided by the current taxation. So if they're already getting trash service and the town's covering that and they're paying for that somehow or another, or maybe some other type of service that is covered through their taxes, this revenue would not take place of that. It would be an additional service as they get. And then an MSD is a way to generate consistent funding for those additional services. So you could have a project that runs three years because you know you have this continual funding that comes through. And the General Assembly of North Carolina adopted the legislation in '73. North Carolina has 60 MSDs that focus on revitalization. The tax rates vary from 1 to 85 cents per 100 in valuation. And then here are, this is a little bit of some, a map of some MSDs in the state. I'm gonna explain to you how some have two or three or four or more MSDs. So you can see there, Raleigh has a few, Charlotte has several, so you can see that there are some places that have more than one. And so they can fund these activities. So you could have a beach erosion and flood MSD, obviously downtown revitalization, urban revitalization. If you're familiar with Downtown Raleigh Association, they have an MSD to assist them with their projects and services. Transit, obviously sewage, infrastructure pieces, so water resource development, some things that we really need here in addition to downtown revitalization. And the statute for downtown revitalization says that the funds can be used within the boundaries of that district to sponsor festivals and markets, promote business, investment, coordinate public and private actions or partnerships, and issue publications. And so then the management of the district can be by the town, can be just by the nonprofit agency, can be a combination of both. If it is by a nonprofit agency, then they are required to have a contract with the town that has to be renewed at least every five years, and they must present an annual report to the town. The contract outlines their performance, exactly what's gonna happen if they manage those tax funds. If it's managed by the town, there obviously is just the normal auditing that would happen in your financial department. There's nothing extra that needs to be done there. So here are some similar municipalities with downtown MSDs, and some of them are larger, but they started off in the same kind of place that we are here. We can certainly arrange a day trip, Teresa and I can arrange a day trip to one of these towns to meet with program directors and elected officials and tour the downtown if you decided at some point you wanted to do that. Also, I would recommend if you're going to the Main Street Conference in Goldsboro, they have an MSD and they have done, they have a huge downtown, but they've done amazing work over decades utilizing that funding. And so we'll talk about some existing, some example rates, and the average rate of the towns that I just showed you is 25 cents. The lowest is Sanford at 11, and the highest is Elizabeth City at 85. And you might think 85 is crazy, but a couple of places have done a higher rate with lower property values, and then as the property values increase because they're investing, they'll change the rate. It's, only a few of them have done that, but one example is Salisbury, if you've ever, if you've followed their progression, even though they're not kind of on this side, but if you've had the chance to visit them every three to five years, you can see the difference. And they started at an 85, I think it was 85, and now they're down to a 20-something because they have done a really good job and it's well-developed. And so here, I'm gonna show you the, some of the details, and this is our current Main Street boundary. This is what was approved for the Main Street program. Now this boundary can be changed at your whim. If you decide that, you know, staff brings data and you say, "We'd like that boundary to be a little bigger. We need to service more commercial properties down there." That can be done. But currently, that is our boundary, and the commercial parcels within that boundary show that at a tax rate of 6 cents per 100 in valuation, annually you would make $9,296.27. And we have a 9 cent rate with the $12,944, and a 12 cent rate with the $18,592. So obviously, if you were gonna go more for the 25, you would, you know, kind of double that 18, be about, you know, $37,000, $38,000 is what would be your total revenue for the year with our existing boundary at a 24 or 25 cent rate. And the low rate would be, you know, that 9,000. In addition to this slide, I have a second slide, which is a proposed Main Street boundary. Now this boundary goes all the way to Gannon, so it encompasses some of those larger retail parcels that we have, the Walgreens and the Compare Foods, and some other, you know, so you can see it goes a little left and right of those because it's, those are commercial properties. Even though it does have a few residential in there, they, it would be tailored to only the residential that have the potential to be commercial, and they wouldn't be taxed until they were commercial. And so it would be kind of, you know, the boundary would change at a certain point, but this is the preliminary proposed boundary. Now within this boundary, the analysis was done again of commercial property, and you can see where the 6 cents is $19,561, and then it goes up to the 12 cents being $39,000. And so, again, if you were to have more of a 24 or 25 cent, you would take that $39,000 and basically double it. So you could see that would be a little bit more money to work with. And then I also wanted to say that one of the things that's important to note is that if you had, for instance, a property that the building and the parcel were worth $400,000. To give you an example of what that tax would be on top of the property tax for Zebulon and Wake County that's already being paid, if it were at 12 cents, which is the highest we have on a chart there, it would be 480 additional a year. So the amount, you know, it's a real amount, but it, but just to be clear about how much we're talking about. And then, one thing that's really important to know is whether you keep the other boundary or you use this boundary or a different boundary that's done with some analysis behind it. You don't have to increase tax to have your revenue increase. We know that revaluation happened and, you know, some values went up, and buildings are bought and sold and values, you know, they're being put on the market higher and higher. But as infill develops or as some of these buildings are rehabilitated and they're turned into mixed use with some retail service on the bottom and some residential upstairs, the values go up. They go up because of investment. So you could sit at this, at one of these tax rates and watch the activity happen as investors are recruited and some catalyst investment starts happening, and your tax revenue could go up because the values are going up. And then you put the values back in and you get this circle of life. Is that right? And then how to leverage the funds. So one way is infrastructure upgrades. So if you're putting this money back in to your services, say the services are to increase your, or repair your sewage capacity so that we can have apartments show up in, you know, two or three buildings that are together. But we can't do that now because there's no way that that can happen unless they invest a lot of money in infrastructure. So if we were to take some of these tax revenues and do a public-private partnership with them where perhaps we are granting part of those funds because they're going to invest this much in outfit of the building, then the building's worth more, we get a little more tax, and it just kind of keeps circling back into the development of downtown. And so our 10-year outlook, if you had an MSD, would be, you know, stronger infrastructure, you would have more historic buildings rehabilitated if you were able to partner with some of these investors. Definitely infill development, that could be marketed very heavily. Upstairs living as well. You can expand the footprint of your downtown, and you can have some targeted recruitment efforts that are consistent over time that give you a more robust business mix. So here we get into the steps to establish an MSD. These steps come from the General Assembly State Statute that they adopted. The statute was revised in 2015, I think it was, accepted. And there were some additional steps put in place to ensure community input and to ensure that the public was aware of how this process works, and if they were affected, what recourse they had to discuss that, along with some other changes like having a contract with the agency that might be managing the MSD and a few nuances like that. So a feasibility report is your first step, and that is what I had discussed in my budget that could be a possibility of something that I would be responsible for next year should you choose to go that way. And that report tells you what is the likelihood that you can do this with the area that you want to, and what kind of revenue could that possibly generate, and if there are any risks or obstacles that you might have, as any feasibility report pretty much does. That report gets, staff manages that process and then presents it to you, and then we update that report based on your feedback. You review the boundaries and the tax implications at a workshop. You schedule a public hearing, and the report, the feasibility report, must be available for weeks before the hearing for the public to have access to. for weeks before the hearing for the public to have access to. The town must mail notices to all property owners in the proposed boundary. And then if there are petitions for exclusion from the proposed boundary, then you review those and you hold another public hearing. And eventually you vote on establishing the MSD, the services that will be provided and what the tax levy will be. Number 10 just says that whatever that happens, the tax does not go into play until July of the following year because you can't tax partial years. So those are the steps. The timing, you can imagine, if you've gone through establishing public hearings, getting some feedback, having these weeks, it's a pretty long process. Even before the decisions start to happen, there's a lot of public engagement that needs to happen that isn't even required because you really have to understand before anybody puts all their energy into this, where do we stand with the folks that are, that own property in that district? So this is a long process and there are lots of touch points with the public to get feedback and their input. The next steps for this particular project, should you want to take next steps, would be for, for this board to decide they want to do a feasibility study and, and then we can move forward with the steps for funding that and, and performing it. And then also if you would like staff to coordinate a visit to any of those towns, I just included ones that were close enough to do a short day trip. We can certainly do that, put it on the agenda for, you know, whenever that seems like a good idea. And I'm going to take your questions, but before I do, oh, I don't have it. There it is. I just want everyone to know that I had a volunteer help me prepare this presentation. She ran all of the tax data information for the existing boundary and the proposed, and that is Kelsey Whitehead. Kelsey is a, Kelsey is a citizen of Zebulon and a recent graduate with her MBA. And she contacted the town and said, "I would like to do something with economic development." And I had just started to work on this. So we worked on it in December and she's a rock star and came up with some really good spreadsheets and I was able to compile that information, just those, those little charts from the work that she did. So want to give her a big thank you.
Would you like to come up and say a few words?
She also participated in our community cafes and, you know, gave input on the, for the-
Well, we certainly thank you for your input and welcome to Zebulon.
So I will take any questions you have.
Any, made a cost on that feasibility study?
I don't know. I haven't done one. I mean, I did one, I did one a couple of years ago that was a little bit lighter than probably what you want and it was about $10,000. So I can check on it though with a couple of consultants that I know have been used. Okay.
It'd be great, appreciate it. We'll do a visit if, 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 as well, except to you guys.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter to me where. Anywhere but Wake Forest.
Wake Forest is a little bit large. They might be-
No Kerry, no Lee Pex.
She's giving you some.
Smithfield. Smithfield is really good. They've been in the Main Street program for a long time and they've had some consistent projects that have lasted over some years, you know, so they might be a good, a good visit.
They've got a big downtown area too. I didn't realize it was so big.
It's deceiving, yeah. When you're just driving through, it feels real small, but then you can just keep going.
When you go and it keeps on-
But yeah, we can work on that. You know, it'll take a little bit of coordinating to get everybody's schedules and we want to get some of their elected officials and some folks to, you know, be able to answer your questions. So I'll get with Teresa and we'll, we'll have conversations with them at the Main Street Conference.
And I'm sure this, this information that we have tonight, we probably need to continue this conversation as much as we can with the interested parties, especially the downtown merchants association.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Keep them informed as a step. I agree with that.
Did you get the direction you needed? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Lastly, this was tabled to tonight from the regular meeting, Zebulon South Fire Station Assessment Budget Amendment, also known as don't send a town manager to do the fire chief's business.
Thank you, Chief. Does everybody know the chief was fighting fire and couldn't make it to the, so glad you got the fire out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we are too. Very, very thankful. So yeah, my apologies to Joe who, I called him just minutes before the meeting started on Tuesday night and I said, "Joe, I'm not going to make it." So that, that was the passing of the baton on this, this, not a whole lot of background there and not a lot of story, but, so in listening to the conversation and the questions that, that came up on Tuesday night, I felt like it's important to give you guys a little bit of background. And with that background, I think you'll get a little more clarity on what we're asking for, but I, I think, I'm, I want to give it, give it a shot anyway if you'll, you'll bear with me just a second to kind of bring you up to speed. So as you well know, we were notified that the developer intended to donate a piece of property for a fire station as part of their project. So that immediately puts us on notice, so to speak, to determine, is this even a workable solution? And it's kind of as I described the other night, the first question is, is it in a good location? And that's something we can typically do internally. And as I said the other night at the, at the joint public hearing, it was, it's an excellent location. That was, it was, it was good enough that it was a really easy decision. The second part of that analysis is, will the site itself work? And that's a much, much harder question, but my intent was to get the answer to that question. So when, whether it was planning board or this board, wanted to use that as a criteria for evaluating how you want to do, how you want to handle that project, I could effectively answer questions related to that project. And that was my goal going in this, is to be able to provide you good information as you decide what you do with this project. So when you're looking at the, that site work, just to give you an idea, you know, will the building itself fit? Will the driveways fit? Will the, will the parking lots fit and all those kind of thing? What is the impact of those power lines coming right over the property? Because we can't do certain things under them and around them and those kind of things. And stormwater management, one of my favorite things because you got to have it, but it really doesn't do us any good. Excuse me, it doesn't do a fire station any good. It does the, it does us good. Don't go, I mean, where's Chris? Uh-oh, I'll, I'll have to make up for that one. We love stormwater management. Stormwater management is, is important and even on this property, for example, if the elevation went the other way from what it actually does, stormwater management would be easier for us. So how does all that figure in? Setbacks and all these kind of things. And then the last question that, that we had is, when we look at this project and we have to start doing stuff, what is the cost? So for example, and I just made this up because I don't think it's the case, but if we had to add a retaining wall, for example, because of the way this piece of property was arranged and it costs us a million dollars to do that, that retaining wall, well now all of a sudden, this is not such a good deal. So yeah, you can make it fit, but there, some things have a cost and we want to be able to wrap our mind around it. That's the information I wanted to be able to relay to y'all. Because as much as we appreciate the donation of land, all gifts are not necessarily exactly what we're looking for and we recognize that and I think you do too. So this, this, these questions that we had were not unlike some that we had with some of the fire station sites that we looked at from back here. Some of you may remember and were maybe in on the board then, we looked at a site on Pierce's Road. We did a very, very similar analysis on that site on Pierce's Road when we were looking at where could we locate the fire station project we're working behind. So we'd had some history doing some of that analysis. So we contacted ADW, our contractor that, for this project and said, "Hey, what, what will it take to, to look at this kind of stuff that's outside our expertise?" They provided us a quotation on how much it would cost to do that work. We had that money within our budget. There was a line item within our budget for a fire station site acquisition. So for me, that was a good fit. We've got money in our budget. We've got a project we really need to get some answers for. Had a conversation with Joe to, to make sure we're all consistent on that and I authorized them to proceed with that work. So that's, that's one of those questions from the other night. ADW is currently under contract to, to do the, the site assessment from the project based on what I just kind of described. The information I was trying to get, the, the professional services contract was of a low enough amount, we didn't have to bring it to you guys for approval. It's, it's on the lower end actually when it comes to those type of agreements. So ADW begins to work and, and part of that was developing a site plan as well as answering all these questions that we had. Had a conversation with Bobby to kind of, as work was getting started and we're, we're talking about the work that's going to be done and Bobby came up to us and said, "Well, the, the money that you're using is really designated for a Station 2 project. We could use it for Station 3, but the clearest way to do it would be to establish a line item for Station 3 project, separate and distinct." That would be, we don't have to do that, but that would be the clearest way to, to track the financial aspects of that. So there is where this, this staff report comes from, is we need your approval to create that additional line item. We, originally we're going to just use some of that money from that Station 2 land acquisition project to fund this, but as we thought about it and, and we decided if we were going to bring it to you anyway to create a line item, that we would ask that that money be funded out of the general fund so we can keep that Station 2 project whole with the money that we had originally budgeted for it. So that's the, that's the question and I'll certainly answer any questions you have, but the, the staff report aims to establish a fund, put some money in it from, it's written that it comes from the general fund, but to cover this due diligence. It's not a really in-depth, but it, it gives us, it answers those kind of questions that I just described. So that's maybe been more information than you needed, but I felt like it, hearing your discussion to kind of, how did we get there, would maybe helpful to the discussion. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
So this initial study will lead, give us enough information to say whether or not we want to proceed with that being a good location for Fire Station 3?
Yeah, so with, with this study, I'll be able to, if, if this, when the board considers this project, if you, if you ask me, is this a good site? Can we build it? We hope have enough information to be able to say, yes, we can build a fire station on this site or no, we can't. It could potentially, if, if you recall in the conversation through the, the project presentation the other night, they came to us the first time and we asked that they increase it because it was, it was just looking too tight. There wasn't a lot of really expertise in that, but it was just, look, so they added some more to it. I could potentially come back to you and say, "We just, we can't squeeze it in there. We need another half acre." Early indications are that may not be the case, but I really, I, I don't know about you, but I want a little bit more confidence. And then I can present you some more confident answer to allow you guys to decide if that's a factor in approving that development or not.
Any other questions?
That part that they're giving us, Chris, that's close to that graveyard, correct? How close is that to the graveyard? My concern is that graveyard is going to be a lot bigger than they'd think, than four people.
The graveyard? I'm not familiar with where the graveyard is.
I took a look at it. I'm thinking it's-
Mike, Mike's got you.
It is not close to that graveyard. It's actually quite some distance from it. That graveyard is located behind the existing home. This is further up the road underneath the utility lines.
Well, there's one, maybe I'm looking at a different site. There's a tree that sits there, the part that they're giving us. There's a tree that pretty much divides what they're trying to give us. Right beside the tree, there's a headstone there, the one I'm looking at when I took pictures the other day. So I'll show you. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong section.
Don't, don't think there's any trees on this spot.
Yeah, this is a fully cleared site.
Thank you.
Do we want to bring this back for boards to consider or do we feel comfortable?
I feel comfortable going ahead and making a decision on, because what I, what I don't want, I want us to know if we can use this, this for a fire station. Because, and I voice this concern or I voice this, because if we can't use it for a fire station, how does that change? Or does it change what we decide to do with, with, if we, you know? So I think that it is, or what else can we do with it if it doesn't? I think it is really important for us, of course, we want the first priority for it to be a fire station, but what if it can't? I think we really just need to know, especially if we continue in conversations with the developer, we just, we just do.
And it is, I, I want to be clear, we, I, I authorized them to go ahead and start the work so that with the intent of we'd have all that done as you begin to deliberate. So it would be our intention that when, the next time you take that matter up for consideration, that I can provide you the results of what we found out. So that's, that's our intent that, that you don't have to wait for us. We'll be, we'll be, we'll be ready to provide you that information when you're ready for it.
That'll be great.
I guess, back to the original, do we feel comfortable moving forward with?
So what's this before us now? Just whether you want, we want you guys to move forward?
Yeah. Well, I, I think what was on the, the ordinance, to approve the ordinance-
Yeah, we have to vote for the ordinance to approve it.
From the other night. I think the concerns were, do we even know we're going to approve the project versus the fire station? So this will help us, I get, I think, to determine whether or not we want to move forward with the project.
It will for me, for sure.
Mayor, if it, if it helps you with the conversation, the, the request was a, was an ordinance, actually, ordinance 2024-33, which that ordinance created that fund for, for Station 3 due diligence and it put $10,000 from the general fund into that account. So that, that's, that's what that ordinance did, should you want to adopt that, but it was 2024-33.
Just put that 10K in there for Fire Station 3.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-33.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? We'll have a roll vote. Commissioner Miles?
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison?
Favor.
Commissioner Clark?
Favor.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes staff presentations for the evening.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.